Okie dokie. All right, good evening, everybody. I got six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. And I'm horrible with my left hand, so I apologize. So we will call this meeting to order 6:00 PM on Monday, the today of August. Okay, let's start off with announcements and citizen comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for the discussion. Or to address topics of interest for the presentation, limited three minutes, please. All speakers conduct themselves in an orderly and lawful manner. All speakers will be recognized prior to speaking. We'll announce their name and address to be included in the minutes, please. State law prohibits mayors and members of council from commenting on any statements and engaging in dialogue without the appropriate agenda item for being posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings laws. Okay, JoJo, first up for us.
JoJo Guzman, 22, Willa Run Drive. Council members, mayor and staff, it's important to remember, we are not a home rule city, but a type A general law city with the council manager, former government, which is governed by powers granted explicitly by Texas statutes, particularly the local government code. If a power is not expressly granted or implied by state law, it cannot be exercised. The mayor and city council together form the governing body that sets the vision, approves the budget, and establishes long-term goals and policy. The council is responsible for representing the community, listening to and acting on the residents' voices. The city manager has oversight of the day-to-day operations of the city, but that does not mean the council forgets about the city manager's performance and the city's progress. Morgan's Point Resort is not Colleen, Belton, or Temple, and we as a city need to be more mindful when implementing policies and regulations for our city government and its employees that are from home rule cities. Community engagement is also not a priority with our city hall, and it should be. Residents do want to know and care about what is happening with our city. Sometimes it feels like the message is clear. City hall and council do not want residents to attend the meetings, especially since posts are regularly inaccurate or unclear. We hear the talk, but where is the action? No employee, in my opinion, unless you are a first responder, should routinely work after hours and especially on weekends. Residents want the paid city hall staff available during work hours to answer the phones and emails and provide accurate services and information. We do leave a message or email, then at least have the courtesy of having them answered within 24 hours, which is a basic level of customer service, and we have fallen short on it for months. This leads, if not already, to an appearance of incompetence, as well as lack of communication, transparency, honesty, and integrity. I do want to commend Jim Ann. She is an outstanding, hardworking volunteer. The paid staff and council should be thankful for her competence, loyalty, and dedication. Also, 16 months was a long time to have the brush sitting along the road on Cottonwood and Possumon Den. I want to put on record my appreciation for BJ and his crew for picking up the brush, and even the city manager profoundly following through on this fire hazard. If we pay property taxes for our city services, then competence, communication, transparency, honesty, and integrity should be front and center. Somewhere in the past months, we have lost that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Linda.
Mayor Jimbo, council members, and city staff. I'm Linda Bridges, 197 Lake Forest Drive, and I'm here to speak about something that touches every resident and every decision we make: city communication. First, thank you, Mayor Jimbo, for launching the bi-monthly chats. I attended coffee with the mayor on August 15th, and it was a breath of fresh air. Residents asked thoughtful questions, and both you and city manager Dennis responded with clarity and care. I left feeling hopeful. Mayor, please keep riding your bubbles. They're a great way to reach folks who can't attend in person, including all outreach opportunities like upcoming events and listening sessions would help even more residents stay in the loop, and yes, I know I'm adding to your volunteer plate. I also attended Dennis's first outreach event on drainage. It felt like a real step toward transparency. I'd love to see more sessions like that with visuals of current challenges, updates on past ones, and expert input. That kind of hands-on dialogue helps residents understand not just what's happening, but why it matters. Dennis's upcoming talk at the NPR Explore Social on August 28th is another promising step. I hope it marks the beginning of ongoing inclusive conversations with residents across all neighborhoods. These efforts are encouraging, but we still have work to do. Communication needs to be more accessible, consistent, and resident-friendly. I'm glad Councilman Sam mentioned the website. It's overdue for a major overhaul. I'd love to see a resident-city discussion board where questions and answers are visible to all. As a frequent user, I find the website difficult to navigate. More concerning, many residents rely on the Friendly Neighbors Facebook group for updates, where well-meaning posts often spread misinformation and confusion. Here's a simple idea: consistent city messaging on the Friendly Neighbors, encouraging folks to follow the official city Facebook page. That might mean more frequent posts, but I believe the extra effort is worth it. And speaking of the website and the city's official Facebook page, I want to offer a heartfelt thank you to my good friend and dedicated NPR volunteer, Jim Ann Durkey. For the many hours she puts in each week to support city communication, her work matters. And so to close, communication and resident tempers are fraying. We need clear, inclusive, and proactive outreach. When residents feel heard and informed, trust grows, and trust is the foundation of every strong community. Thank you for your time and your continued commitment to listening.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't know, chicken scratch. Somebody's just signing in that they were here, I heard. So, okay. That's all we have for public comment this evening, so we will move right into the agenda. First, I do want to mention, you guys probably noted that the city manager's not with us this evening. He had a death in the family, so we just want to send our thoughts out to Dennis and his family as they work through that issue. It's never pleasant, never easy, so thoughts out on that side. So, first thing up today is Resolution 25025, which is receive the 2026 proposed annual budget council. You guys should all have that. Ms. Dorothy, you should have had it emailed to you. You did receive it, correct?
I got it. About 15 minutes to go.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is turn it over to Mary and let her kind of walk us through some of the high points of the budget, and we'll move on from there.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and members of the community. Residents, what we have before you is the meeting is to receive the budget, the proposed budget, and I just want to, as per Dennis, highlight some of the items that you'll find in the budget, and that is the major improvements that are targets or the priorities for the budget is the second year of the roads for the residents, part of the plan, the city plan. It's also a public safety generator. It's also $75,000 for the John and Say Park improvements, and another $75,000 for the mini pumper. The proposed budget also includes a 2% cost of living increase for all employees, with the exception of the city manager. So those are some of the highlights. There are funds, when the revenue comes, as per the audits, as Dennis mentioned earlier, the city manager. Based on the priorities of the city that you have in your plan, after we get set in stone, then the city council will determine what the priorities that you're going to go moving forward, based on the funding that's available. Okay? So that is the budget. Overall, there are some fees that also are included on the budget that he'll talk to you about later when he comes back, but it has, the budget has the plan of everything going from each of the different funds. The fleet internal service fund, the technology fund, which also includes a website upgrade, so that also includes a website of revamping the website, so to better communicate with the community. So that's part of the proposed budget. So that's here, and I think there's more, I guess, on the next item, but there are other hearings that will be set. This is just to hear the proposed budget. September the 4th is going to be to set the preliminary tax rate, and then September, well, that's number 26.
I thought we were doing that tonight.
We're going to be setting the date. We're scheduled September the 9th, 2025, to set the preliminary tax rate. That would be the date to have the hearing.
Yeah, so Dorothy, I was with you. We discussed that before we got started, so because I was asking about the dates and everything. So what I, for clarity, what I have is this evening is, and we will loop back, you know what, I'm just going to go ahead and I'm going to tie 25 and 26 together, unless anybody has any objections with that. We'll, yeah. So the memorandum, which we have, 25, oh, 26, essentially is, the memorandum just outlines scheduling the public hearing and setting the tax rate, which will take place on
September the 4th.
Fourth.
That's to set the preliminary tax rate is September the 4th.
So the special session on the 4th will be to actually set the tax rate?
The preliminary tax rate, and then September the 9th.
Okay, is that set by law? I thought we were doing it tonight, and then on the 4th, I am like not available at all. Not that you need me for a quorum, because you have four other council people, but if there's any way that could be scheduled for after the 4th, as long as there's no legal issues, or I would like to be a part of that.
When will you be back, Dorothy?
Well, I'm coming back at 4 o'clock on the 4th, so, but I'll be in Austin, so I can be available after the 5th. And I thought we were doing it on the 9th, for some reason.
On the 9th?
Well, I thought we were doing it tonight. I thought we were doing it tonight, and then on the 9th, we were going to have the public hearing.
Yes, on the 9th, we're having the public hearing on the proposed budget, and then September the 4th is to set the preliminary tax rate, which will be the exact same rate that we have right now. It's not raising the tax rate.
Okay, and my understanding is the preliminary tax rate is the highest level that we are willing to consider as a council, and that we cannot go above that preliminary tax rate. However, we can go below it. So is the proposed tax rate the highest level tax rate that we can assess for '26?
The demand and this rate is the highest rate, and that's at 63.98. The current rate is 62.53, and the proposed rate is 62.53. The highest rate is 63.98.
And, but we are absolutely not doing that tonight, and I will be unavailable to do it in the future, and that's disappointing to me. If that can be changed at all, I'd like to participate, because I have some pretty strong feelings from a financial aspect of our city. So, anybody else want to weigh in?
Yeah, council, let me ask this, council. If you guys have calendars, or iPads, or phones, or you're just really smart with dates, and Mary, if you can chime in on this, is there any issue with us moving the establishment of the tax rate to the 8th with the public hearing on the 9th? There's a 15-day window, from what I understand, from, from, yeah, I don't have the numbers. Neil, can you answer that? Nope. Okay. Sorry, I digress. Dorothy, what I'd like to do, council, if you don't have an issue with it, is I would like to push this back to you and Dennis's absence, along with Neil. Let's figure that out. Let's see if we can move the 4th to the 8th. If, is that, first off, is that a problem for you five? If the law allows us, can we move the setting of the tax rate to the 8th?
And if not, could we move it to the 5th?
As long as you
I asked Dennis, I asked Dennis to do that about a week ago, so that's why I'm confused.
Okay, we will look at, council, look at your calendars, the 5th or the 8th. Right now, just be open on both. Does anybody have?
I have no problem.
Okay. Stephen, any issues with both of, either of those dates?
I'm good with either date.
Good.
I was planning to be out of town on the 4th, but I'll come back if I have to.
So you will not be available the 5th?
I will be available the 5th.
Okay, yeah, it sounds, it sounds like if we can move it, so let's, so, Mary, if you would do that, let's, let's, let's get with Neil, let's get with Dennis. Dorothy, you're okay with that, the 5th or the 8th? That works for you?
Yes, absolutely. And then, as a council, just take a look at when we establish the preliminary tax rate. Remember, that is the very highest that we can establish, and my concerns are, we really don't know our fund balances. The last number I saw was that the general fund two years ago had a million-dollar deficit in it, and I don't believe that's true, but that's the preliminary financial statements from the auditors. So I don't want to go in low, and then we haven't even looked at the budget yet, so I'm hesitant to go in low when, without seeing any information, I guess. It's like I'd rather make an intelligent decision on our tax rate, rather than just saying, oh, let's just hold it flat and hope for the best. I'd like a discussion on it.
Okay, what I'll do is, I'll take it back to Dennis, the city manager, to see if the 5th is good and how that might change the meeting on the 9th, if it has to make any change, if we have to make any changes on the 9th. Hopefully, we don't. So the proposed budget, well, this will go on the website. We'll have the scheduled hearing on the 9th. Well, I'll talk to Dennis about the preliminary tax rate hearing, if we can move that one to the 5th, and then we'll stick with the September 23rd date of setting the actual tax rate.
September 23rd?
The 23rd? Okay, that's the first I've heard of that date, because we haven't, we don't have a budget calendar yet this year, so all these dates are new to us. So on the 23rd, we're going to set the actual tax rate.
Adopt. Yeah, we'd adopt the actual tax
Adopt, adopt it.
And also adopt the budget.
Okay. Going back to the budget real quick, I know today we're only receiving the budget, and I would like to, and I just sent this to you, Jimbo, I would like to set up a workshop, and I know we've got a lot of meetings, but the budget's important. It's our primary responsibility, and we're just now getting it. So this is condensing the city council's involvement in the budget till the crunch at the very end. So I would like a workshop on the budget, and I think it needs a minimum of two hours to consider everything in the budget, and consider our tax rate, and how, you know, how it impacts the city, and what we're trying to accomplish. And I suggested that it be that same week as our council meeting. So I'm just throwing that out there. We do need to have a workshop on this.
Okay, so anytime, you know, because we have the proposed budget on the 9th, so you'd like it on the 8th?
Well, if we do, it depends on when we're doing, I mean, I'm fine with talking preliminary tax rate, along with talking budget. I can do those both in one meeting. So if that works for the 8th, that's great.
The 5th, right, I guess, so I can
But I don't want to jam it, I don't want to jam it into our regular session, I guess. This, this needs dedicated time from council.
Right, right, totally understandable. So I'll get with the city manager, and we can get back to you either on the 5th or the 8th. Is that good? Because everybody said everybody was available either the 5th or the 8th.
Adopt the preliminary tax rate then, and then do a workshop on the budget discussion. Yes, on the 5th or the 8th, sounds good.
So one would be a workshop, and the other would have to be a special session. So we would need a quorum for the tax rate. I mean, I'm sorry, a super majority.
Yeah, council, there's no issues with either of those dates again, and you all shook your head. So, okay, 5th, 8th, and 9th, they're all good on the calendar, as well as the 23rd. Should that hold true for, to actually adopt the budget?
And the tax rate.
Yeah, to actually put it on the 23rd, is that?
Yeah, because we'll be getting on the 9th is the target date for us to get public input, to get community input for the budget, for the proposed budget. So.
It'd be nice to have our workshop before then, but
Right, I agree. So we could, I'll talk about, I'll confer with Doug, Dennis, and find out, the city manager, and find out whether the 5th or the 8th works best for him.
Appreciate it, guys.
Yeah, the only issue I have on the 23rd is we might need to look times. That's, that is opening night for the Red Wings, by the way, sorry, priorities. Hockey season's kicking off.
Super majority at that meeting also on the 23rd.
Yeah, but we have a lot of work to do.
Okay, all right, is everybody, everybody tracking? Clear as mud, you know, it's my favorite, one of my favorite
Do we get a calendar sent out for the month of September, once you agree with Dennis what's happening?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Send it out.
Council, I do have a couple of requests for you. Obviously, with the process being what it is, and kind of where we're at on the calendar and the timeline, make sure, take some time, go through the budget, scrub it as best we can. I haven't talked to Mary. One of the things, just because I'm a simple, stupid kind of guy, for me, one of the things I just, I asked her for before we got started, and she's going to give us, is essentially a legend or a key. So when you look at the individual account numbers, for example, you know, 02s, and 08s, and 07s, and 3s, so that I can correlate that to what department that is. I know there's been some changes in the budgeting format and everything as we're moving along, so I just, I just want to know where, yeah, where
Here has the summary on, you'll see the summary, but I'll redo it and I'll put the fund numbers on there, so that you can have it with the fund numbers, with the department names.
So, yeah, we'll dig into that. Please take some time and dig into it, so that, you know, we can come ready to go on the 5th, the 8th, the 9th, or 23rd, or all of the above, and move forward. So we're 20, 35 days away, so I think everybody's starting to feel a little bit of the pressure, and we just need to, we need to get it done, so. Okay. Any other questions, any concerns from council? Any do-outs?
Just on the 9th, to have the hearing for
Yeah, just setting the 9th as, as a public hearing.
To get community on the budget.
Budget and the preliminary tax rate.
Well, the preliminary tax rate, we had, it's what we're going to, I'm going to talk to Dennis about, to see if he wants to do it on that date, or the 5th, or the 8th.
So the council's saying no to the 4th, but we're giving the city manager the option or the 5th or the 8th?
Right, for the preliminary.
When we decide this resolution, you'll just let us know which date Jimbo's going to sign.
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Yeah, which, and I'll get with, I'll get with you guys individually offline, just to follow up with calendars and make sure that everybody's, you know, again, more and more
And also for the workshop, we'll let you, when I get with him, because you wanted the workshop, either the 5th or the 8th. So it's the preliminary tax rate, and then the workshop.
And a two-hour workshop.
Yeah, I want to, I want to, just so you know, I want to tie up these loose ends here in the next day or two, so we can get this posted now to residents, so they know, they know what's going on, because then
Yes. Yeah, the one for the preliminary tax rate is five days. That's why the 4th was the one that was going to be set for the preliminary. So if we move it to the 5th, we're within that time, that timeframe, so that's, that's fine. We do it to the 8th, we're still in that, within that timeframe that we need to have it on, so we're good. But I just, I want to make sure that we do the workshop, work it in where he feels comfortable which day. And unfortunately, because of the situation right now, I really need to get with him, to give him that time to also be ready.
And if we have time at our regular meeting, hopefully, the '26 budget will be on our agenda, so that we can discuss it, and maybe even agree on some components of it. And that would have to be in a regular session, as opposed to a workshop.
Yes, ma'am. I know that, like I said, the streets are on there, but the funding, because, like you mentioned earlier, until we get the audits and we know how much funding can be earmarked for the other items that are part of the plan, which is the last couple of pages of the five-year capital improvement plan that's there. The plan was to go through, like I said, and work on the parks, do the mini pumper, do the website, do a couple of things, and then for council to set the other priorities based on the amount of funding that would be available once we see the revenues coming in.
Yeah, and I see some new fees being established, so council will want to discuss the new fees. I see franchise fees from the enterprise funds, that the general fund is going to start charging, the, the general fund is going to start charging the enterprise fund franchise fees, and so council will need to discuss that. So I just want to make sure that that's a part of our next meeting on the 9th, so we can discuss it, and then if we want to go ahead and make a decision, that we have the flexibility to say yes or no to those new, new items being added to the budget, that we've never had before.
Yeah, and it's also the combination of the fire and the police department with the public safety, so there's
We have not discussed that either.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So his intention was to, you know, make plans to work with you, to schedule a meeting, to, you ought to let us know what day was the workshop that he could plan it, but unfortunately, right now, that is a little, the days are a little bit more constrained to either like the 5th or the 8th, so.
Yeah, I understand. All I'm saying is, we're going to have a workshop on the budget, but we're going to have to have a regular session on the budget, too, so we can make decisions. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll make sure that that's on the agenda on the 9th, Dorothy, for the regular, the regular session. We'll make sure that budget is
Okay, thanks.
So, and just for clarity, this budget is built with the restructuring of the public safety department, is that correct?
Restructuring of the public safety department, the website, the improvements for the park, the mini pumper, and the second year of the road improvements for the capital plan. So the five, I think it was a 10-year plan, yeah, and the generator for the Public Safety Center.
We're not going to go into fund balances, to fund operations again this year, in this budget.
No, ma'am, that's not what the plan is. The plan is to use existing revenue, and also to charge also that brush fee that was discussed previously, and it was a dollar for the quarterly, and then the $4 a month, it was like $5 for the brush collection.
Yeah, and we need to talk about that, you know, as a council.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, yeah, council, again, I urge you to do diligence, dig into it, and with the meetings that we have coming up, let's, let's bring some good discussion, good questions. Get this rolling forward, so we'll go once around.
It would also help, too, it would also help, too, if staff could give us some background for these proposals, like on the merging of the public safety. Can we get some, are we all just supposed to go do our own research on how this works in other cities, or can the staff give us something like, it is, you know, it's their recommendation, and it's because of this, and this, and this. So adjust, you know, an executive memorandum, or a, some type of memorandum of discussion for these type of changes to our city.
Yes, ma'am. I know that the city manager met with the fire department and the police department, and there is a plan that was being worked on to go through in phases for that project. So I'm sure that Dennis will share that, the city manager will share that with council at the workshop.
That way, we just all don't have to go do our own research.
Yes, ma'am, totally understandable.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll go once around, and Sam, anything, anything to add?
No, I have nothing, thank you.
Okay, no questions? Okay, no questions? You're tracking with everything going on, I think? Probably about as close as I am right now. Yeah, yeah, you're good with dates and everything?
Dates are fine, fine.
Okay, Stephen? Dorothy, anything from out there?
I've said, I've said it, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Bruce?
Just to let everybody know, you know, we take the budget pretty seriously, that's why we're asking all this stuff. Yeah, whenever you have a change to the overall budget, we're going to, or I'm going to have some questions about why are we doing it, right? So from staff, really appreciate you guys, if y'all could give us some reason why we're looking at doing what we're doing. Because if not, then we're going to say, well, that's not going to happen, and that's going to slow down the process. A little preparedness on our part, your part, make it go a whole lot smoother. But, yeah, that's it.
And I have my marching orders to pick a date, make sure I get back with a workshop and a preliminary tax rate, either the fifth or the eighth. And I'll get with him and I'll send it out.
I had a squirrel for a second. I was trying to remember what the squirrel was. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, we do need to, I guess, just have a vote to make sure that the ninth is okay for a public hearing. So since we are setting the preliminary tax rate and setting the date to hold a public hearing, so counsel, if I can get a motion to set a public hearing for the ninth currently.
Is to get the public input for the community then.
So I'm going to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Set the motion to set the prelim, or for the public hearing for the preliminary tax rate and for the proposed budget or not?
This is just for the public hearing.
For the public.
For the preliminary tax rate.
Right, well, we already said we're going to wait because of the fourth, we're re-changing that one, but I, we need to get the date to do the community input for the ninth on the proposed budget, which will be posted on the website. So this is where the community can come in and ask, you know, make comments on what they see.
Yeah, so then.
But this public hearing is just on the preliminary tax rate. That's what you're asking, Roxanne?
For the ninth, the public hearing is to go over the proposed budget to get public input on the budget.
So that's what you want in the resolution? Or do you just want the date for the preliminary tax rate and what Jimbo's going to sign?
So this one is, from, from our discussion, what I'm understanding is, what we are deciding right now is we have put on the calendar for either the fifth or the eighth, a workshop and special session at which time we will set the tax rate. Okay, is that, everybody's tracking that? Is that, okay. On the ninth will be our regularly scheduled council meeting, which will include budget as an item, agenda item, so we can continue to discuss it. And it will also be the public hearing in accordance with the.
Getting community input for the ninth.
Yeah.
So the original one of having it on the fourth is now going to be changed either to the fifth or the eighth, when I get with, with Dennis, right? And then the ninth is to get community input on the proposed budget. I'm sorry. No, 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 this is to get community input on the proposed budget on the ninth, because the budget will be out.
I move that.
So let's, let's, okay, just, I think there's some confusion. So what document are we looking at? Are we looking at city council memorandum? Because this is what Roxanne is going to do a motion on. Setting the preliminary tax rate for next year. And instead of the fourth, it'll be the ninth. That's the only change. We're not talking about the budget yet. If you just want this piece of paper signed by Jimbo.
Yeah, so the tax rate should come off there. It should be just scheduled a public hearing for September eighth.
Well, I thought it was either going to be the fifth or the eighth.
The ninth. So we're going to need to do, we're going to need to do another memorandum like this one, Dorothy? Where's, where's it?
Okay.
Because, yes, this one right here, 25026 says, setting the preliminary tax rate and schedule a public hearing for the fiscal year 26 annual budget for September 4th. That is going, so what, if this makes sense, we're going to, we're going to strike out the tax rate on this one, because we are not setting the preliminary tax rate tonight. Okay, everybody, that makes sense so far? So we're striking out setting preliminary tax rate tonight. So 2526 is just going to be to establish a public hearing on September 9th.
For what?
For the proposed budget and the tax rate. The tax rate itself will be set on either the fifth or the eighth, depending on which day we establish.
That's the preliminary one. We don't adopt it until the 23rd. So this is, you have to keep the word preliminary in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think really all you need in the motion is a public hearing on the ninth.
Yeah, that's, that's essentially what, but what I'm looking for is a motion for 25026 with the correction, remove tax rate, and adjust public hearing to 9 September. And then we will put together another memorandum to establish the preliminary tax rate on either the fifth or the eighth. Does that make sense? Or is that wrong?
The memorandum that's here is, this memorandum is to set the preliminary tax rate. And I understood that you all wanted it either on the fifth or the eighth. That's the memorandum. Although I know it's, the agenda has on here, consider memorandum resolution setting the preliminary tax rate for the fiscal and setting and date, and setting the date to hold a public hearing. The public hearing date would be on the ninth.
So you have asked for a motion to have a public hearing on the ninth to consider the budget.
Correct.
I so move.
Thank you.
Not the preliminary tax rate, no.
The preliminary tax rate would have to be based on your conversation. It's either going to be on the fifth or the eighth.
Yeah. Ninth is a public hearing, and that's what the motion says.
The community input.
Yeah.
Right, so all we're doing tonight is establishing a public hearing on the ninth. Y'all get all that?
That's it.
All right, I've got a motion from Sam. Can I get a second? We'll clean up the paperwork.
We also need to set the preliminary, the date for the preliminary tax rate.
So we need two resolutions.
Yes.
Okay, so here's what I want to do. I got you. Now, now it's, now it's making sense. All right, counsel, what I would like to do is scratch the fifth. That's a Friday, and Fridays are horrible. Nobody wants to be in a meeting on Friday, on Friday night. Counsel, what I would like to do is accept a motion to conduct a workshop and a special session to establish, to set the preliminary tax rate on the 8th of September. That's what I would like to do. Does that work for everybody?
Do we even need a resolution for that?
Well, it's in the, it, there's a memorandum, so I assume that we're going to need one, yes.
I'll move.
And to set the tax rate. So just, since our attorney is not here, I'm going to make sure that we're covered. We are not going to screw this up. So I would like a motion to create a memorandum to, sorry, to set a workshop, special session on the eighth to set the tax rate.
Preliminary tax.
Preliminary tax rate. God, I hate that word.
Sorry.
And how much time does we have to set it before we can have a public hearing on it? Is there a five-day time window? That's what I, why I said the fifth, because.
Once you, we presented this, then we have to set the preliminary tax rate, and the reason we had the hearing on the ninth was to go over the five days, was to go over the proposed budget and get input from the residents.
I'm not, but what, the preliminary tax rate, once we as counsel set it, doesn't there have to be a five-day time window before it can go to public hearing? So the eighth will not work if we're going to have the public hearing for the preliminary tax rate on the ninth.
No, that's not, we're not having a hearing, public hearing for the preliminary tax rate. That's not what the ninth is.
It's for the budget only?
Yes.
But when it, so when are we going to set the preliminary tax rate hearing for the public? That's what I need to know.
Let me see. You all want to do it on the eighth? Yes. Yeah, I didn't bring the book with me. Yeah, the schedule, the way it was set was so that it could get, follow the timelines that are required by statute. So we had the preliminary tax rate set on the fourth. And then the hearing to get, it's five days after you set the hearing is when you get input, and you do the budget by.
I think they changed, I think it was changed to five. I thought they.
Yeah, Dennis said five. Yeah, we went over it.
Jimbo? Do we want to reconvene tomorrow? And once we get this worked out, we get the proper memorandums, and we do it with the paperwork in front of us that says exactly what we're setting, and Neil will have a chance to weigh in, Dennis will have a chance to weigh in. I'm concerned that, and I'm, I'm fine turning it over to staff's hands, but I want to make sure they understand the guidance we're giving them.
Yeah, because of the timing of everything, we had to follow the timeframe of the fourth was to set the preliminary tax rate. Then five days after that, you get public input on the proposed budget. Right? And we vote on it, and then on the 23rd, you adopt, based on the number of days, because it has to be a certain number of days. The 23rd was the earliest that we could have the adoption of the tax rate and also the adoption of the budget on the 23rd. And that puts us very close to September the 30th.
That all sounds rational, and the only thing is a motion on the table now for a public hearing on the ninth. The rest of it can be an agenda built by the staff and noticed to all of us.
So what I'm.
Yeah, we need, we need a calendar. I mean.
What I'm wondering, though, is if, if maybe we need to stick with the 4th of September, because otherwise we're not going to be able to have a public hearing on the preliminary tax rate. I don't think we can delay this.
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's, what I'm reading here, going through the dates and everything, is, is we're going to have to, yeah, so we're going to have to go back to all of this to go around in a circle. We're going to have to set everything on the fourth.
So being we're, we're still open, I know there's a motion on the table to set the public hearing for the budget on the ninth. Is that what, what I understood your motion?
Yes.
Yes, it was, so.
And Bruce seconded it, so we need to vote on that, and then we can do some further discussion on the tax rate, preliminary tax.
Yeah, because we can always change the preliminary tax rate. I mean, it is preliminary. It is set at the same rate as last year. So it's not going to, I mean, we are going to get more revenue because there is more properties.
Just a point of order, I think we need to vote on the.
Yeah, we need to vote on the motion.
The motion that's on the floor.
Yes, we've got a motion and a second for the ninth, for the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
For the public hearing for the budget. All in favor, then?
Okay, all those in favor of that? Any opposed?
I'm not sure that's what the agenda says. I'm so sorry.
No.
Can we look at the agenda again? It says, consider the memorandum for the preliminary tax rate for the budget, and set the date to hold the public hearing, and my understanding is that's on the preliminary tax rate. We're not addressing when the public is going to see the budget yet. That's my understanding. Now.
Yeah, but the problem is, on the memorandum, it says, set the preliminary tax rate and schedule a public hearing for the budget, annual budget for September 4th. So that, that, that's the problem we're running into, is the memorandum and then the resolution are their interpretation and with the.
So discuss and consider a memorandum does not require a motion. We have made the motion to hold a public hearing on the annual budget, and that's done. But we're not required to make a motion for the other. We're setting the preliminary tax rate. What we need is a notification and a calendar from staff to tell us when we're going to have a workshop, and at what point we're going to consider the tax rate.
So being it's on the agenda, can we discuss some of our thoughts on the preliminary tax rate? Dorothy, would you be ready to, to discuss what your thought on it?
The only thing I want to make sure is that the preliminary tax rate that is being set is a ceiling. And so we cannot go above that ceiling.
Right.
So we haven't even seen the budget yet. We have no idea what's in the budget. And we're being asked to set the tax rate. Now, a normal person would say, well, let's just keep this tax rate the same as it was last year. But we've made a lot of decisions, and we adopted a road plan, we made a lot of decisions on different projects like the wildfire. And how do we know that that tax rate that we're setting is going to pay for everything we've already decided without these new franchise fees and fees to our residents? And so it's like, we're being asked to make a decision, and we haven't gotten any information yet. We, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I would love to hold our tax rate flat. I think we also have an issue of the split between maintenance and operations and interest and sinking fund, because our interest and sinking fund is dropping $350,000. How does that equate to a tax rate, which I've asked that question, and I have yet to get a number? And then what is our M and O going up? How much are we increasing the maintenance, the operations part of the tax rate? And again, I don't have that number. So we're being asked to do something. I don't know the parameters. I think, I'm not sure that it's covering everything we've already approved. So you see, I'm just real, I haven't had, this is, I just got this budget 15 minutes before you guys walked in the room. And that's because I begged for it for the last three days. If I could please have it in advance. My understanding is it was ready on the 21st, but I couldn't get a copy of it. So I am at a loss.
Dorothy, are these things we will cover during the workshop?
Yes. But you're going to set that preliminary tax rate before the workshop. So here's the deal. When you set the preliminary tax rate, I won't be there, which is fine, but you better set it at a level that you're comfortable going below. Because you cannot, that is a ceiling. You cannot go above it. So that's really my concern. And again, the biggest thing is being asked to make a decision without information. And being crammed, being jammed to make a decision. So that's my concern.
Could, Mayor, can, may I put some input? Dorothy, I, I hear exactly what you're saying. However, I feel, as a counsel, we have a real obligation to hold those taxes. Because even though we keep the same tax rate, the appraisals are going up on housing, and we, we will be getting more tax revenue even, and I think we just have to work within that budget. I hate to set a higher tax rate. I really do, because I just think, we just, we have to.
We're not going to set it. It's just the preliminary.
Right, right, but I mean, I don't want.
We don't know yet. Mary, do you have an answer as to whether that includes the $100,000 exemption or the $140,000 exemption that's being voted on in November? Do you have an answer from our tax assessor yet?
Okay, can you repeat the question? Because what we did, when we looked at the revenues, we got the tax rolls from the Cameron County Appraisal District, and that is what they projected as the, as the revenue. That was what the tax.
Do you know, do you know what exemptions that includes?
It did not include the veterans. It didn't, it did not include the veterans that we have, that were not approved by city council. There are no new exemptions.
Okay, but the Texas Legislature passed a, or didn't pass it, it's going to put it on the ballot for November to give everybody, or most people that it's their homestead, $140,000 exemption as opposed to $100,000 exemption. Do you know if this tax rate you're proposing is including the 140 exemption or the? Do you know if this tax rate you're proposing is including the 140 exemption or the 100,000 exemption?
A hundred.
So if, if the voters say in November, we want 140,000, we're going to have less revenue next year, according to this budget?
Yes.
Okay, these are the unknowns that, and Roxanne, I hear you loud and clear and I tend to agree with you, but I just don't want council to flippantly say, I'm going to hold the tax rate the same. We need to understand the implications of holding the tax rate the same.
I thought that was one of the reasons we were going to have a workshop.
We're setting the preliminary tax rate on the 4th. We're going to have the workshop on the 8th. We have to do it before the workshop. That's what I'm hearing. Okay, I'm done, really. I've said what I needed to say. So I think we just move on with the direction that you guys are going.
Mayor, can I ask Dorothy one more question? Do you think it's possible that we might need a preliminary rate that's higher?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
My understanding is we can go to the de minimis rate in the preliminary tax rate. It's an optic that our residents absolutely will not want. They will want to say, hold the tax rate the same. But fiscally, we need to understand the dynamics of our revenue and expenses for next year. And until, you know, an hour ago, we hadn't even seen anything. So I, I am 20% of this body and I have shared with you some of my concerns. Roxanne, I tend to agree with you, but I want council to understand the risks.
Mr. Mayor, it seems like, if I can simplify, that the de minimis preliminary tax rate could be inadequate as proposed. It might need to be higher. And that's what Dorothy is telling us. She wants to be sure that, she wants to be sure it's high enough.
The tax rate, the proposed tax rate on 25/026 of 62.53 is the same as last year. I understand there's a tendency to want to hold and not go up. We do have this dynamic with our debt, so we need to understand that dynamic. The debt's going down $350,000. That will help our maintenance and operations. What we can go up to is the de minimis rate, which if you look at that memorandum, is .6398. So it's about a point higher.
Mayor, mayor, you might have chime in for a second?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So to, to clarify what I think what Dorothy is trying to say is, again, when you set the preliminary tax rate, you cannot go above that later. Once that is established, you cannot go above that later. So I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Dorothy, you want to go ahead and set that at the highest you possibly can, which is the de minimis rate, just in case you figure out you aren't going to have enough money or the 140,000 exemption was not calculated and you're going to need additional revenues because you won't be able to go back. And then if you find out during your proposed budget hearing that the tax rate can be lowered back to the current rate, then you would establish it back to the current rate.
Yeah.
This would be true. The only thing you don't want, the public perception of they're raising taxes.
Correct, correct. I understand that.
Yeah, we've got Dennis on the phone, so hold on one second here.
Yes, I own a friend. Okay, so I have Mr. Baldwin, Dennis, on the phone. And he is stressing, I mean, if, to still try to hold that meeting on September the 4th, to hold the preliminary tax rate day because we need to get a public hearing from the residents. Right, well, that's already as the, well, seven days, but it's five days, working days. So it's kind of the same thing, but it's five days on the 9th so that we can get to the 23rd of adopting the tax rate and the budget. Yeah.
Yes, and my understanding is everybody's already agreed to that.
Yeah.
The question is, what's going to be the decision on the 4th? Not that we have to decide tonight, we cannot. But what are the dynamics in play for setting the preliminary tax rate?
Well, I'm going to-
And honestly-
I'm going to go, I'll look through the budget.
Go ahead.
One of the things, as I've been talking with our city manager ahead of time, there are some new proposals like for a public safety center as one group. So we'd have one chief over both departments. That would eliminate one of the positions. And so, and they would work in collaboration with each other. So if we adopted that, that alone is a, you know, it's going to be saving a whole position. And so I think there's some cuts that are in the budget. And I also, just as FYI and our, and my thinking so far is when talking with the city manager, we had a lot of interest and that we were paying off and that, that is almost paid off. So that's going to be extra revenue because we'll keep the same amount of money coming in, but we won't have debt to pay off. So because of that-
That's about 350, yes.
So because of that, I, I, I feel like we're, we're probably, I feel, I feel like we're safe in setting it the rate where it is now. But I may, we have to look at that 40,000 exemption versus 140,000 exemption. If that comes through, that could make a difference too.
And the other thing is, Roxanne, last year, at this tax rate, we took about $400,000 out of fund balance, which we are not going to do in '26. We're not going to take anything out of fund balance because we don't know what even our fund balance is. So I hear you loud and clear. There's a lot of dynamics that we need to understand, right?
There's a lot that we don't know yet.
Okay, we got, go, go ahead Dennis, if, I don't, I don't-
I don't know if you can hear me, but you're on.
Okay, this is, I, here's some discussion, but let me, tonight, really the only thing is, of course, according to the agenda, is, of course, we see the budget. The budget's been, been drafted based on-
I can't hear Dennis. Am I supposed to hear him?
Hold on, hold on one second, Dorothy.
Dennis, hold on one second.
Okay, I didn't know if I was supposed to hear anything.
Is he on speaker?
Can you hear me? Yeah, he's on, he's on speaker. Okay, try now.
Okay, can you hear me? Is that better? Can somebody hear me now?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, okay. Tonight's thing on course one is to receive the budget. The budget's been built on a tax rate of 6253, which is the current rate that we're currently using. So it'd be keeping the same. That, but then, and then the next item on the agenda though is the setting the, the, the date, the location and the time of the preliminary, for the preliminary tax rate hearing, if you will. Tonight's not setting it. Only thing tonight is setting the date, time and location. And then at the hearing, you could set it higher. You can go all the way higher, what you, what number you want. You can go to the de minimis rate, you can leave it where it's at, however you all want to do it. And then, and that's the only thing really is just done at the preliminary tax rate. We will have a hearing and at the end of that, you adjourn the hearing, then you set the tax rate immediately following. And that's just a preliminary. It doesn't mean it's the final tax rate. The final tax rate comes later on when the actual levies, when the budget's adopted. And then there's like a three-step process for the actual adoption. And that will be done, that's the actual tax levy. So that will be done later in the month. There's a couple of different dates that regulate how, that the budget was delivered to the city secretary's office on the 22nd, I believe. There is a 30-day period that you have to wait for, before you can set the tax levy once it's been delivered to the city secretary's office. There's a 30-day mandated waiting period before the levy. Well, you don't set the levy till after you have the budget adoption. So on the 9th, which is not really on the agenda tonight, but the, I do recommend that on the regular session to go ahead and have an opportunity for the citizens to come in and give input. Particularly if you all, but you have to have a hearing. It doesn't matter what day you choose. But keep in mind, there's a lot of timelines. And right now, the way it's working, it's going to put it out about a week before the deadline, by the 30th of September. If it's not adopted, then it rolls back to the voter approval rate. So that's significantly lower. So these dates were set for a reason. They're not ideal, but we've got a lot of moving parts, people coming and going. And, and so I know the 23rd is probably the newest thing you might have heard. But that's because the state law requires that 30-day period before you assess a levy. And if you're going to do that, then you need to adopt the budget beforehand. And so that's why it's the 23rd suggested. The budget is pretty basic. There's not a lot of stuff, I told you already as a council, that there's no fees except for the brush fee and the quarterly cleanup fee. A dollar for the quarterly cleanup and a dollar for the brush fee. We're making some investments this year. Obviously, we've made some already as council has. And there'll be more next year. So in order to fund this program, I'd highly recommend we do that. I don't think it's a good idea to look at any other fees because our revenues, we know about the expenses hitting our budgets the way they were. I don't believe having any kind of, without knowing how their revenues are affected. We've seen some of the revenues hit the wrong accounts. They were going into, even our tax dollars were going in the wrong account. We got them where they're supposed to be, at the INS accounts. But it's one of those things where this still needs to be flushed out. I don't think you're going to be short anything. There's money in the budget for streets, for the mini pumper, Johnny State Park and generator and for the public safety department. And the website. There's not a lot of stuff in there. The revenue we got is based off of the tax appraisal district's numbers. They looked at it as well. They use the same numbers we used, I think it was 591. So the revenue's pretty, pretty good. But we also have a backup just because we're not 100% sure we're going to get the full 100% of the taxes because we haven't really done that in the last three years. So we budgeted, I think it was 98.5% collection rate. And so that's going to give us, it's about 70,000. We've got 40 set aside deliberately and we've got a contingency fund that we could fall back on if we need to as well. So really, there's no, there's nothing new. All the capital, CIP's been removed. And so as we discussed first, let's go ahead and get the audits 24 and 25, get them closed. And they'll be able to look and see exactly where you are financially before you start releasing the 100,000 or greater capital improvement projects in all funds. Except for the, the general fund, which is done from your tax rolls. So that's, that's about the only deliberate, understandable, more confident way of looking at how we're going to fund these programs. But even then, the streets won't be used to, so we got plenty of time to modify that. If it's too much, we can always bring that down. So I don't think, other than the dates, and I know there's people coming and going and that's a little bit of a problem on our side, trying to come up with some kind of definitive date, what we're going to do. You all have to decide. I would strongly recommend if you all could pull it off, we need four warm bodies for anything tax-related. You don't necessarily need it for the public hearing, but you definitely, for the, for the having citizen input. But you definitely need it for the actual tax purposes by law, super majority. So it'd be four. But it's your all's call. I've given you the best I can give you. I would recommend you do it. It would, it would make it where we can go ahead and stay on time and get the budget adopted by the 23rd of September and meet all the statutory requirements that I can meet. Obviously, there's some things we, we, there's some challenges as in like, if for some reason there's a petition to say, we don't want this tax rate to be so high, but we have time. If it looks like you all face that, you can always lower it down to the no new revenue rate. There's options you have. I figured since it was built around the, the current rate and, and the budget's built that way, and I think everything's going to be fine based on that information. I have no reason to think otherwise. And I would suggest you do that. If you bet you're not going to set that rate tonight, you have time to think about it and you can set it at the de minimis rate. But that's all, this is just nothing more saying this is a date, time and location, we're going to have a public hearing for the tax rate. That's, set the preliminary tax rate. That's all it is. And when you set the actual rate, that's going to be just before you adopt the budget or right after you adopt the budget, preferably on the 23rd, no later than. Does that make sense?
I lost you.
I didn't hear.
Can you hear us now, Dorothy?
I can.
Yeah, I hear you now. I just lost Dennis.
Oh, okay, okay. That may have been me.
Yeah, so we're just now, we're just now getting the budget, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. But we are taking, it looks like 135,000 from the water fund as a franchise fee and 16,000 from the marina fund as a franchise fee in addition to admin support of 240 from water and 41,000 from marina. So those are, the franchise fee is a new fee this year that we're taking from the enterprise funds. So just throw that out there. And we're, and we're funding the general fund from the enterprise funds slightly.
That's, that's actually in the book. It will explain that. Reason is, you, you have franchise fees. Franchise fees are different than administrative support. Cities-
Right.
By and large, by and large, they'll, they'll charge both. And the reason for that is because you try and address two different things. One is to support the administrative side of the house on those enterprise funds that can't support themselves and use the general fund for that. So that's that part. Franchise fees, on the other hand, have not been charged here. They should have been. And it should be dedicated to the roads so you can have a sustainable funding source for roads and improvements could be drainage, it could be anything else. But the right-of-way franchise fees, you can look in Belton, Temple, Clean, they do the same thing. But I dedicated them this year, the, all of them, for the, the roadways, for the, excuse me, in this case, for the roadways. But it's for CIP infrastructure that, and that's what they're truly intended for. So that's dedicated there. And in future years, you'll have that 300,000, whatever it is, dedicated for that purpose. But every fund should be able to provide, if they're going to get administrative support from the general fund, they should reimburse it. That's one. And two is franchise fees, you've been collecting, but we have dedicated them for the purpose of the right-of-way, the drainages, what have you. This year is actually done that way. And it's a good funding source in the future.
Yeah, we just have-
And the other reason why you got more money this year is the debt dropped off and we moved that to the M and O. So now you've got more funding there as well. So I think you're going to be fine. And well, what happens after it's, budget's adopted, if you all choose that, hey, we need to make some adjustments, you know, beyond what I've recommended. If you want to do that, you can. And you can always slow things down. But remember, not much is going to happen really after the budget's adopted other than to let us go ahead and see how things work on the audits. And that gives us time to react. The budget adoption is down the road anyway. Right now, we're talking about rates, which ones you want. In this particular, and tonight, you should be thinking about date, location and time. That's all you're, then at the hearing, you'll decide what rate you're going to have. And you can set whatever you want. A lot of cities go the highest they, they can. It's usually controversial with the residents because they say, well, why you set the highest rate? That just, you know, and some of them would say, it's totally fine. But I did, what the budget was built on. But it's your call. Tonight though, we definitely need to know the date. Because if you walk out of there without a date being set, the process has to start all over again. We have to get the, you know, get another agenda in. We've got to find the dates. And it may be a little bit more challenging. If, if it's adapted tonight, what I would, as in you set the date, time, location, we can get the notice for this meeting out, but we can also get the one for the 9th out as well.
Yeah, Dennis, everybody agreed to the 4th. It's just, I'm not going to be there and I'm not, I'm en route, so I won't even be able to zoom in. And Roxanne just asked me the question, what are some of my thoughts? That's the only reason we're even discussing it. We have, we, everybody's agreed to the 4th. There should be four people there. We should have a super majority.
Yeah, on the 4th, I'm barely, barely hearing you. Are you saying the 4th, we have a super majority?
Yeah, we do now.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so-
All we need tonight is for you all to declare the date, time and location. So the September 4th at the Garrett, Mc, Event Center?
Here.
At 6:00 PM, for example. Well, if you do that, then, and everybody agrees, then we, it needs to be a record vote. Everybody has to say, yes, 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 yes. And then we take that information and we'll end up putting it into, on a, basically it's a notice that has to go out to the public saying there's a hearing on the tax rate. And then there's, that's the night you get to choose where you want to set the rate and have that discussion. But tonight's nothing more than just saying, yes, this is the date, this is the time, location. And we have to take a record vote. Each person has to say yes. And once we got that person, we got it written down, we'll put the names on it, we'll put the notice in the paper. Preferably get it out there tomorrow. They probably wouldn't get it in the paper till Wednesday. But then we'd be up and running and we're tracking on that part of the statute. That's a tax statute. But there's a, there's a Texas local government statute that also you have to abide by. And that goes back to, you know, you've got to have- and that goes back to, you know, you've got to have a citizen input on the budget you're adopting, and you have to have a, set a, you have to adopt the budget by, you know, certain time. You can't, you know, it's later than September 30th, and you have to have the, you have to have the tax levy, the final one, and that's the one that's official. But, you can't go any lower than the one you set at the next meeting on the 4th. So, if you set it at the highest, you can do that, and you can always come down, but you can't go up if you set it. But, I didn't see a reason for it, and I know it's controversial in some communities. It may not be here, but, you know, you can do the de minimis rate.
You're a funny man, Dennis.
It's really up to you guys. I think what we got...
Is the 4th to be a public hearing, then?
We don't get a hit of...
I'd like to make a motion, if that's all right, Dennis.
Okay, sure. I, I think we got it on this end, so, yeah, we'll let, we'll let's get back to business, and we'll, we'll see if we can convolute it some more. Yes, sir.
We like to make things more complicated than need to be sometimes. Not always, sometimes. It's more fun.
Dorothy, I just have a quick question. What time are you getting in on Thursday, the 4th?
I arrive in Austin about 4 o'clock.
Okay.
So, it'd be really tight for me to get there by 6:00. I might be able to get there by 7:00.
Let's set it for 8:00.
Let's set it for 7:00.
Yeah.
I, I think we should set it for 7:00.
That'll work.
Okay. I appreciate the accommodation.
Yeah, well, that...
And I did tell, I did tell the staff this a week ago, but I, and I asked if there were legal restrictions, but I never heard back from my, my request, so...
We'll make a big announcement. We're not meeting till 7:00.
But, it is an odd date. It is an odd date, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to set a motion.
Hopefully, hopefully, I'll be on time, but I will text you guys.
Okay. I'll call you.
For RS 25026.
Okay, your motion, please.
I would like to set a date on September the 4th at 7:00 here at the Garrett Event Center.
We're a public hearing.
We're a public hearing. On the preliminary, on the plum, plamim, on the, on the preliminary tax rate.
I second.
We can make it done now.
I've got a motion, I've got a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Oh, my Lord. Thankfully, that's all we have this evening, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn us at